This is the time that was noticed and posted for our regular board meeting. This is Tuesday, February the 7th, 2023. It's 10 o'clock a.m. or close. The Board of Supervisors hearing room, we're on Melody Lane in Bisbee. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action? And would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where its standards, one which should not be forgotten, and whose goal it's looking to achieve.
Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on the agenda is subject to modification at this meeting, and the Board may vote to go into recess into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We'll begin with the roll call. District one.
Crosby is here.
District two, Supervisor English is present. District three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 612-602-982-POUND. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. And as I was told earlier, if you're on Teams, you perhaps will not be able to see the the items that have been displayed for us, but it is part of the agenda, so you can refer to it there. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on the agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. You may note that some of the attachments have been updated since the agenda was published. That means that presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And we begin with the call to the public. The first speaker request form is from Madeline Bolosowski. It says that that person is in person. Madeline Bolosowski. Okay? You don't happen to be online, do you, Madeline? Okay, we go to the next one. This one is on Teams, and it's Jeff Sturgis. Are you on Teams, Jeff?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
All right, I'm Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. Supervisors Peggy Judd and Tom Crosby, how much more will your unethical and illegal actions cost the taxpayers of Cochise County? Besides the $1.9 million that you turned down in grant money for the county, by my reckoning, the cost so far is about $113,000. As has been noted by the Bisbee Wire, that does not include hourly wages paid to those county employees taken away from their normal tasks to work on the bogus issues brought forth by Crosby and Judd, nor does it include the hundreds of unpaid hours that residents spent imploring the Board to do the right and legal thing, or the hours spent by the county attorney's office in dealing with the antics of these two supervisors and our county recorder, David Stevens. And now, we have the cost to our county of forcing our superb elections director, Lisa Mara, to resign because she can no longer bear the harassment and threats from the unethical and illegal actions of Crosby, Judd, and Stevens. As the Herald Review points out in a recent R-View editorial, Cochise County citizens, taxpayers, and voters may have to wait until the general election in 2024 to rid ourselves of Peggy Judd and David Stevens. But we have an opportunity to dump Tom Crosby earlier before he can do more damage. Supervisor Crosby, as you know, there is an ongoing recall effort well underway with Democrats, independents, and Republicans signing every day because they know how much damage you have done to our county fiscally, ethically, and reputationally. I really wonder how you sleep at night knowing what you have done to our community. Why don't you do us all a favor and save Cochise County taxpayers the money needed to remove you from office? Please resign now. And Peggy Judd, please do the right thing and join him. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Allison Morris, I believe, on Teams. Are you there, Allison?
I think so.
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I there?
Yes, we can hear you.
You know, my speech was very similar to Jeff's, and I think you all know how we, we, not just we, but a huge percentage of Cochise County feels about the recent events, really the whole recent months of election debacle. You know, the costs involved. I mean, this is really outrageous and such a disgrace. I'm running out of adjectives, frankly, but, you know, who really could blame our director, our elections director, Ms. Mara, for resigning? When she was personally harassed, received threats, and was personally sued by the two supervisors there, Judd and Crosby? It really comes as no surprise, but how is it possible that a tenured elections director with an impeccable performance record is sued lawfully for doing her job? And what government would tolerate this unjust action brought against one of its most distinguished public servants? And frankly, what employer would condone this kind of unethical behavior and hostile work environment? Sadly, the answer is Cochise County. That is shameful. It really is. So, I don't know when and if Supervisor Crosby, if you will ever step up and take responsibility for the damage you have done to this country, county, but the deviant behavior is not what we expect from our elected officials. Needless expenses resulting from your lawless actions are not what we taxpayers expect from you. If you're unwilling, Supervisors Crosby and Judd, to play by the rules and demonstrate respect for the law, as Jeff said, please resign now and save us all from further costs. Thank you.
Okay, next we have an in-person Sandra Clark. There was some background noise. Can you shut that off, Kim? You have three minutes. There was some background noise on Teams. I ask him to get, remove it.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I came very organized today because I really want to be able to present a case that might make sense to everyone, not just people who think like me.
Could you move closer to the microphone because we need to have...
Sorry, sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Since I'm addressing them, I apologize for not looking at the audience, but really, I care to convey my feelings to you. So I found in Washington Post an article that appeared on December the 2nd, and the title is "Cochise County Didn't Used to Be Land of Far-Right Stance", with the tagline "Democracy Dies in Darkness". And this is by a professor from Georgetown University. Her name is Catherine Benton Cohen. She studied a little bit of a background about Cochise County and a little bit of a history, and I thought it was interesting because Christine Rhodes is mentioned as one of the people that served in this county to show how Cochise County used to be and how it still can be. But I am here to find out what happened to you, Mr. Crosby, because every time I've come here and listened to you, you always say, "I want to know the truth." You are a truth seeker, but your actions are farthest from the truth. You and Ms. Judd, together with Mr. Stevens, brought a frivolous suit against the impeccably credentialed and consummate professional, the hero of the Metons, really, in Cochise County, Lisa Mara. And how do I know it was a frivolous suit? Because Mr. Blames, the attorney that you wanted to retain, who is famous for not shying away from controversy, refused to defend you because it's hard to defend the indefensible. You also promised, Mr. Crosby, and you, Ms. Judd, I was in here when you said it would never cost the taxpayer a penny because we are going to pay for it. Well, that was a lie because you are not paying for it, and the taxpayers are going to pay for it. Money that should go to good causes because nobody wanted this sham of a lawsuit that you created it, really, from your own private beliefs. So last Thursday meeting, I also, I was online, waiting to attend to see what happened, and you guys all went into executive session, which I understand, attorney-client privilege, I can fully understand that. But we thought, you never said you'd never come out and give us what the decision was. Instead, you, Ms. Judd, I remember you giggled when you were trying to say, "I moved to accept what we decided in closed session." It was such an offensive behavior towards us who had waited online patiently for over an hour.
Your time is up, Sandra. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm here to ask you, Mr. Crosby, also to resign.
Your time is up.
Maintain some of your integrity, please. Thank you.
All right, we move on to...
Oh, I think I get to respond.
If you would like, if you think you've been harmed.
Okay. I would like to refer anybody with a paper and pencil that's interested in the the laws here. We got ARS 16602B and Election Procedure Manual, Chapter 11, Roman numeral 3A, and this is what the Board agreed on and voted on in favor of on October 24th. So I've seen it repeated, illegal actions, illegal hand counts, and so on and so forth, but it is not an illegal hand count. And I believe that the problem that resulted in all the legal fees that are subsequent to October 24th are due to wrong, bad advice from the county attorney. And it's all about the voting machines, and if we can't check them, my constituents don't want them. All the court cases since October 24th, 2022 are properly the responsibility of County Attorney McIntyre. Thank you.
I would like to say something personally. It was said that I have harassed and threatened Ms. Mara. It's been said many times by many people. I never threatened or harassed her. In fact, I really do like her and have appreciated her in person and in emails and never, ever spoke ill about her. And I find it sad that I'm being, you know, been accused of threatening her, and she even thinks I threatened her, which is very silly. But I didn't, never threatened her. We never did anything illegal. In fact, we were not even... As it came out, we didn't even get to do the hand count, which was legal. We were doing it in the legal fashion according to the Secretary of State herself and the Attorney General. We were prepared to do it, but it didn't happen. And it's just, it's just odd that there's so many people that are believing things about me in particular that I threatened or harassed. I would never threaten or harass anyone. I would doubt anyone in this room would have believed that, that I would threaten or harass anyone. So, anyway, thank you. That's all I needed to say.
I believe Ms. Judd has been threatened over this. Isn't that correct? Okay.
Are you both okay now?
I'm okay. I'm finished.
All right, let's move on then. We have a presentation scheduled from the Cochise County Attorney's Office on the Legal Statistics and Trends for Calendar Year 2022. Ms. Roberts? As you know, on occasion, we have reports so that the public has a little more information about what goes on in the county offices.
Good morning. Supervisors Judd and Crosby and Chairman English. I'm here today to do our annual report on the legal stats and trends that we handle over at the County Attorney's Office in the Civil Division. As you know, we come here yearly just to give you a snapshot of where things are. So I'll be assisted today by my senior paralegal, Catherine Barney, who will handle the second half of the presentation. So to start off, the County Attorney's Office represents all of the elected officials, the Board of Supervisors, all of the departments, where generally the in-house counsel or general counsel for the county, we do everything on the civil side except for the criminal, which we have a criminal division that does that. So to start off, one of the things we handle are adoptions. This year, we handled 33 adoptions, which was a little more than last year's. We represent the public fiduciary in their attempts to take care of incapacitated individuals, and this year, there were 17, I'm sorry, next slide, 17 public fiduciary investigations. Next slide, please. And the public fiduciary was appointed either guardian or conservative on seven of those cases. Next slide. The public fiduciary's office also works with probates. There were no probates this year that had to be done. Next slide. Over at the County Attorney's Office, we also handle tax appeals. This year, in December of 2022, we received 10 tax appeals compared to last year, 11 tax appeals, which is a pretty high number over the last couple of years. A significant difference has been the nature of the tax appeals we received. Where in prior years, we would receive a lot of small tax cases. These are all large tax appeals that require a pretty extensive litigation process. Next slide, please. We handled 159 tax lien foreclosure cases in 2022, just one shy of last year. And as you can see, over the last three years, it's been more than double than, or just about double of what it was in 2019. So these cases were increasing. We handle bankruptcy cases over there for the Treasurer's Office. There were four bankruptcy cases this year. Next slide. We also handle eminent domain and excess proceed cases. We've had 19 excess proceed cases, the highest that we have had pretty much ever. Next slide. It was election year, and there were very many election contests and challenges for nomination petitions, for initiatives that were being run on the AMA. So there were 10 of those cases that we handled. Next slide. We did not have any merit commission cases this year. Next slide. We did not have any civil rights mission cases this year. Next slide. The county received 16 notices of claims against the county. It was actually more than 16. There was one notice of claim that was received and four additional lawsuits that all in regards to the 2022 election hand count and certification process that were not included in these slides as the County Attorney's Office did not handle the actual representation on those. Next slide, please. Of the 16 notices of claims that came in for the year, we handled eight and resolved them in-house at the County Attorney's Office, and eight were referred to, next slide. And the additional eight were referred to the insurance handler, Arizona County's Insurance Pool, ASAP. Next slide. There have been five new civil lawsuits that were received that we are working on. Next slide. One civil case was referred to ASAP, and they have, of that, none is pending at this time. Next slide, please. There were also seven U.S. District Court cases that we're working on, and these are all basically cases related to election law and election regulation laws, new laws that were passed by the Arizona Legislature that are being challenged by various groups. Next slide, please. We had 399 public records requests that were coordinated through our office. Next slide. The Sheriff's Office had an overwhelming number of 3,335 public records requests. Next slide. We represent community development, and we handle the planning and zoning violations. This year, we had 436 zoning violations received. There were hearings on 61 of those. Next slide. And of the 436 received, 402 were resolved. 61 went to hearing. Next slide. And of those, let's see, they referred 16 to the County Attorney's Office for us to initiate legal action on. We filed complaints on four. We got judgments on four. Three were dismissed for various reasons, and probably because the violation was resolved. And six of them were cases that we were able to resolve before we had to file litigation. I'm going to hand the presentation over now to Catherine Barney, who will go over our mental health statistics.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the mental health commitment cases. We sometimes refer to that as Title 36 because it is the Title 36.
Could you give us your name and title for the record, please?
Catherine Barney. I'm the senior paralegal at the Cochise County Attorney's Office in the Civil Division. So here we see a snapshot of the total cases for the Title 36 mental health commitment cases. In 2022, we filed 169. Next slide. And to clarify, that 169 includes cases that our office initiated. So 143, we filed a petition for court-ordered evaluation, which is the initiating document for a Title 36 case. 26 cases were transferred to Cochise County from other jurisdictions. Next slide. So once again, we filed 143 petitions for court-ordered evaluation. Of those 143 cases, 65 went on to have a petition for court-ordered treatment filed, and 44 of those resulted in an order for treatment. Next slide. Of the 143 petitions which we filed, 14 were filed on incarcerated individuals. Next slide. Of the 143 cases initiated by our office, 99 of them were dismissed. Next slide. This slide shows the breakdown of those dismissals. The top two reasons being voluntary admission, meaning that the patient later changed their mind and agreed to accept treatment on a voluntary basis, or they did not meet the statutory criteria, and the physicians recommended our office drop the case. Next slide. 65 cases, once again, we filed a petition for court-ordered treatment, meaning at that point, we are requesting a hearing. 17 of the cases that went to hearing were contested. Next slide. This refers to a revocation. So basically, when somebody's already under an order for treatment and they decompensate and require additional stabilization, we file an order or a motion with the court requesting they be rehospitalized. We filed 122 of those revocations. 31 were patient, we had 31 repeat patients, meaning that they had more than one revocation filed on them throughout the year. Next slide. This shows the hospitals that we utilized in 2022. Our top facilities for last year were Canyon Vista Medical Center in Sierra Vista and Sonora Behavioral Health in Tucson. And that is the conclusion of the mental health slides. Thank you.
So, as you can see, we've been very busy over at the County Attorney's Office, and this is just a snapshot of some of the things we do. It's not by all means an all-inclusive list of things we do. We were also very busy this year with water litigation. That's been picking up. There was the AMA initiative that was going on that required a lot of work and research on, and just general advising for the various departments. It's impossible to put everything into a brief presentation, but this was just to give you a snapshot of where we are. My Civil Division is here today. If they would please stand up. I'm, of course, I'm here. I'm going into my 14th year of practice. We have Chris Carlson, who's going into his 12th year of practice, and who is our water law attorney, who's been very, very busy. We all do multiple areas because he's doing a specialization in water law also. We have Paul Correa, who is our litigation attorney amongst many other things that he does in the office. And he's going into his 27th year of practice, so we're very fortunate to have him. We have Alzazana, who is our legal secretary and office manager. Deborah, who is our paralegal, who works on various different things for me, but a lot with the Treasurer's Office. And Catherine Barney, who is our senior paralegal, who works primarily Title 36 and adoptions. And we are missing our PRR coordinator. She's actually leaving us in another two weeks. So she's back at the office training our new PRR coordinator, but that would be Dawn Gonzalez. We just hired Molly McCarty, who started yesterday, who will be joining us. So, next slide. So our clients, as I said before, are the Assessors' Office, Board Supervisors, all the county departments, you know, other county attorney advising, the public fiduciary, the recorder, the sheriff's office, the school superintendent, the treasurer. Now, next slide, our non-county clients, excuse me, or adopted parents who are seeking to do adoptions. We also represent Cochise College. We give advice to fire districts, library district, mental health agencies, hospitals, road improvement district, and water districts. Next slide. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions.
Well, I guess we look at the Board first and see if you have any questions.
I'm impressed. Thank you. Every year, I'm like, oh my gosh, so many things. I don't have any questions. I do, I do wonder or am concerned about the number of the mentally ill patients that have to get transferred far away. And so, one of my, I noticed that you mentioned Tucson CBI, but I noticed that a lot of them were in Benson, were in the Benson facility. Was that accidentally written Benson instead of Tucson?
We don't have a Benson facility anymore.
Okay. Well, it did say this.
I'm sorry, that might have...
Changed that to Tucson, possibly. You said the greatest number. Oh, the blue and red. Okay. Okay. Okay, I just saw that really high. Never noticed just quickly. It was Benson as we were passing by because it was a lot of information really quick.
Sure, and we can explain the increased number, Tucson. At one point, Canyon Vista Medical Center was not accepting Title 36, weren't doing evaluations, weren't doing screenings, so we had to send everybody to Tucson. So that's why the Tucson number was higher. They didn't do it for the better part of over a year, I believe it was. So all the patients had to go to Tucson. Towards the end of the year, maybe late third quarter of 2022, they resumed doing our Title 36 as far. At one point, we actually had to, the county had to do a contract with the Pima County Mental Health Defender to assist them on the defense side for the patients because of the transport and the difficulty going back to Tucson.
Yeah, because it is difficult. I know a healthy person having to go away from home for treatment of any kind is hard. And I just, I just wondered if there was anything we could do as a Board to help promote more mental health facilities in Cochise County. And also, we did have some COVID grants that were kind of looking into that mental health provider type thing. So I'm just wondering where we're going from here because it seems like it gets brought up occasionally in one way or another.
Oh, I guess it gets brought up all the time. There's just a paucity of resources.
I just want to be supportive of that effort.
Yeah, there's a paucity of resources really for mental health out in Cochise County. And unfortunately, when Canyon Vista stopped doing the mental health evaluations, it really put us in a tough spot, so.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. I think the Board made a significant step when we gave part of our funding, the million dollars to Curacaua, for them to sort of beef up their program and hire psychiatrists to work with people in the area. And the Sheriff's Department has a new facilitator at the jail. So every day, I think we're moving forward. It's slow, but it's progress. Do you have any questions or comments?
I think that I speak for the Board when I express my gratitude to the judges and attorneys involved with adoption and custody cases. There's the happy side, and then there's the not-so-happy side, and I understand the difficulty, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work, and thank you, staff. You know, we don't often get to say that to staff in person. You know, we, we don't often get to say that to staff in person, so thank you for being here, and we appreciate the work that you do. All right, we'll move on now to the regular agenda, and we begin with the consent agenda, which is items one through four.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt the consent agenda, items one through four.
Wait, wait, wait. Oops. It said one through four, but public hearing is number four, so it's one through three.
Madam Chair, correcting. I move that we accept the consent agenda, items one through three.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. And now we begin with the public hearings. Adopt Resolution Twenty-three oh six. Could I have a motion while Mr. Correa is?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution Twenty-three dash zero six, granting a water service franchise renewal to Holiday Express Enterprises.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Holiday Express is where you stay, if you want to be smart.
Holiday Enterprises Incorporated.
All right. We have a motion in a second, and I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Correa, are you going to explain this to us? Your name is mentioned here.
Confused.
This is a renewal of a water franchise. This water franchise was granted, I think, twenty-five years ago, and so it comes up for renewal by its own terms. It's pretty basic.
Any questions about?
Yes, indeed. Mr. Correa, thank you for being here. Is there a provision for future county-imposed franchise fees if the legislature approves franchise fees for the county?
This follows a standard term in our franchise contracts. There is a provision if it was authorized, but at this time, Mr. Crosby, it's not.
I understand. So if the legislature approves franchise fees in the future, the county will implement those without a vote of the franchise payers? Is that the, the basic plan?
Your supervisor Crosby, there is no plan. There's simply a provision that is forward-looking to protect the interest of the county. In the event that a future board of supervisors was faced with that issue, they would then take a vote and make a.
All right, I, I think we should do it now. So I will be voting against this because there is not a provision for, for franchise payers, which is the customers, to vote on it. Thank you.
There are any other questions?
Any other questions, Ms. Judd?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, so it seems as though we have a renewal in front of us. I'm, if, I'm sure if you have no other questions, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And, because I had no one from the public that wished to speak on this and call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
The record show that Mr. Crosby voted nay. We go to item number five, which is action item, and it is an agreement. Mr. Olinen, could we have a motion while we're waiting for him to get to the microphone?
Madam Chair, I move we approve agreement M twenty-two dash zero zero six-three between the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, DEMA, Cochise County, and the Cochise Sheriff's Office, CCSO, in the amount of six million dollars effective October first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, to purchase portable radios for Cochise County law enforcement and fire department first responders.
I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion in a second now. Mr. Olinen, would you explain to us about the, the grant?
Well, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Yes, this is one of those great things that come along, seems like once in a lifetime. Under border security and technologies, I submitted a request for portable radios under the technology portion, and they were approved for us to be able to purchase next-gen portable radios for fire and law enforcement. When we ran the numbers, it, I asked for six hundred, but when we ran the numbers and looked at the tax and what else we need to support these portable radios out in the field, it comes out that we can end up purchasing five hundred of these. Hundred and fifty of these portable radios are hardened radios for fire service. Basically, when they go into a fire, I guess they withstand the heat so that they can keep their communications going back to their, their base. Three hundred and fifty are going to be going to law enforcement, and they'll be distributed out to the six law enforcement agencies, or seven law enforcement agencies throughout the county. The agreement comes with multi, what they call multi-gang chargers. Multi-gang chargers are used in the fire environment where they go into their bays on a call, and they pull their portable radio at that time. The rest will be going out as single-unit chargers. They're going to be going out to the law enforcement side. Police officers charger radios at night or during the day, whenever they're off duty. It's going to include microphones on the law enforcement side and hardened microphones for fire services. They're made for extreme duty. It's going to give us seven years of warranty, so anything that breaks, ship it into the manufacturer for repairs. And it's going to give us some applications, but the really, the big applications that we're going to be taking advantage of is the manufacturer will come in, program all the radios for us, provide the training and project management. So it's, ends up a, a real win for us here in Cochise County. Do we have any questions?
Any questions?
Not this time, thank you, Madam Chair.
It's good.
Oh, thank you.
Well, when you pulled the, the numbers necessary, and you had to go down to five hundred, are there still needs there out there, or did this pretty well cover everything?
At this point, it's pretty well going to cover everything. The fire departments have their plan, and I'm looking at that right now, we have two, or basically two-frequency portable radios that we purchased seven, eight years ago under the first go, go run, if you want to call it that, where we went VHF and seven and eight hundred. I'm looking at that we can also begin to push those farther out to like search and rescue people that don't have them or volunteers, fire people that don't have them. We're going to be in pretty good shape throughout.
So we were able to serve the volunteer fire departments as well as the city fire department?
All twenty of them.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. The next one is again from the sheriff's department. Could we have a motion while we're waiting for Mr. Watkins?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve agreement M twenty-two dash zero zero fifty-six between the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, DEMA, Cochise County, and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office, CCSO, in the amount of eighteen million, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars, effective October first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, to fully fund the southeastern Arizona Border Regional Enforcement Team Saber Program for the period of five years.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Mr. Watkins?
Madam Chair, Supervisors Crosby and Judd, thank you for having me here. I appreciate this opportunity. It's a, with a great degree of excitement and enthusiasm, I come to you today to talk about this unique opportunity. As my boss just said, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I'm here to ask you to accept a, an agreement for eighteen million dollars, eighteen million and change to fund Saber Team for five years. That's a huge amount of money, but what that means is we're going to bring in thirty-four high-paying jobs into our county that are taxable and bring economic revenue into your communities and serve your constituents with zero fiscal impact to your communities. To explain what Saber is, any amount of words that I say up here today is not going to do it justice. Our Saber Team is a central figure for national security across the country, and it, as federal resources continue to deplete, as well as state resources, our state and federal partners continue to draw upon our Saber Team more and more and more. And it is through this lens that we're requesting to expand the program, again, with zero fiscal impact to our communities.
Well, in hearing from the, the new governor, in hearing from the new governor, there was the statement that Saber Team was not going to be funded. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention and the board's attention, that when I looked at the contract, it said that it could be terminated.
So it's, it's my understanding that we have sixty days from the time of approval that it can be pulled. I was unaware of Governor Hobbs's specific comments regarding Saber Team. So just a little backstory. Our Saber Team, which is inclusive of, from, from Cochise County Sheriff's Office personnel, is one sergeant and four detectives. The rest of them are National Guard support or something like that. I am fully aware that Governor Hobbs is planning on pulling National Guard support by June, as well as she is in talks of removing what's called Border Strike Force funds. That's a separate pot of money from this DEMA grant, unless something catastrophic occurs, which my state partners tell me that this, this is good. We have this money, and it will take a catastrophic incident for them to pull these funds. This means that we are a fully autonomous, self-sustained, sufficient for five years with zero hampering or manipulation from atmospheric conditions. If we were to continue as the program is now, where our team is being funded by Border Strike Force funds, it is highly likely that Governor Hobbs will pull those funds. In addition, we know that she's going to pull the, the National Guard resources, which means that we would lose Saber as it currently exists.
Right. Well, as, as I mentioned to Chief Olinen, I, I thought it was information that the, the board should know and that the public should be aware of, and that the employees who are hired realize that they're being hired under a grant program.
Yes, ma'am.
And we know that, but we want to make sure that the employees know that when they're hired and, and sign the documents that Cochise County doesn't have the responsibility of continuing this program once the grant is ended. Now, when you have a successful grant, being able to get another grant or being able to do something is, is very high, but it's not, it's not for sure.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's why we always have to assure people who are hired under grants that, you know, you do a good job, and the likelihood is we'll continue that, but if, if something happens, this may go away. And I did notice that you were hiring a lot of people who may not be under the public safety retirement system.
Yes, ma'am. The majority of this grant is civilian personnel to augment and offset what the National Guard currently provides for us.
Right.
And that they fall under the civilian PSP, or not PSPRS, it'd be Arizona State Retirement System with a much lower ERE. But even if, even if they had a higher ERE, all expenses, EREs, health insurance, everything is included in this proposal.
Right. Well, I just wanted to make note that there were a lot of civilians that could be hired under this instead of just police.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Certainly, Mr. Watkins, thank you for being here today. I know it won't surprise you, but it would surprise the average person that in 2012, senior diplomat Alan Burson said, "The border between Chiapas, Mexico and Guatemala is now our southern border." So whereas many people have been ten years behind the globalists, I haven't been ten years behind the globalists. And so I understand what's, what's going on a lot better than most people because of my career in the Border Patrol. So I'm looking at the, this, this PowerPoint slide had to do with Saber, and it says twenty-seventeen to present, and I'm just going to read some of the statistics that I'm sure you're, you're proud of. Felony arrests, sixty-six. Years of incarceration, ninety-two. Pounds of marijuana, six thousand. UDA, Buckeye Pictures, thirty-five, thirty-seven. Mules, Buckeye Pictures, two hundred and fourteen. Federal years of incarceration, nine and eleven pending. UDA apprehended, fourteen seventy-eight and three thousand eighty-nine. What does UDA stand for?
Undocumented aliens, sir.
Okay. And so what does that mean that the Saber Team in, in this report having to do with twenty seventeen to present in this time, sometime present being twenty nineteen, I believe, about a year and a half? What does that mean that the Saber Team apprehended that many UDAs or undocumented aliens?
Supervisor Crosby, thank you for allowing me to, this opportunity to talk about the amazing conduct of my team. I valued your time, that's why I didn't include it in the beginning. So that is a year and a half old statistic, and those stats are demonstrably increased to current. To put it into perspective, Saber detections are what the cameras that are embedded on known smuggling corridors, both drug and human smuggling corridors, have detected. So that means once it's gone through all of our artificial intelligence and everything, then a Saber employee verifies that that's an actual undocumented alien, and then they either send a team out to intercept and apprehend those undocumented aliens or drug smugglers, or they contact one of our state or federal partners, and they're allowed to send resources to intercept those. Those new numbers are somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty thousand detections on our Saber cameras, and they have roughly apprehended, meaning put hands on nearly forty thousand during that period. Just during the month of January, our team had four thousand one hundred and seventy-one detections, and they put hands on one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven personnel that were taken into custody. And these are people that would have not have been apprehended if it had not been for those individuals right there. I could go on and on, but anything that comes out of my mouth will not do value to this conversation.
Appreciate that, Mr. Watkins, and I'll get, going to give another insight for a bike career in the Border Patrol when I was in Spokane, which is probably the mid-nineties. It was in, in the middle of amnesty two, amnesty two under Bush one. And what we were claiming as an apprehension was actually a, a notice to appear, and that isn't an apprehension in my book. So I know that what might be called an apprehension might not really be an apprehension if you are letting them go. And so that's, that's the point that I'm making here. And so I'd like to reiterate, the Crosby platform is to prevent illegal aliens from entering the United States across our Mexico border and prevent, contraband, that is the Crosby platform. Thank you very much.
There's value to that.
If it's prevented, then you're available to pick them up, okay?
What's that, ma'am?
If they aren't prevented from coming across, then we're asking you to pick them up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about this large program that we're accepting? And hopefully we'll, I don't know that it will take any stress off of the sheriff's department, because anytime you have activity going on, there's always stress related with that, but it certainly will help with some of the things that we weren't able to afford and that the sheriff feels is necessary. Any other comments?
I have one. I've also been really impressed by the Saber Team and its development over the years. And, and I'm sad that we might lose something at a time when we need it the most, and I feel like right now, we need, we need that kind of support the most. So we will not lose it. You guys are going to get this done. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hearing no further comments, I'm going to call for the vote. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. And I think it's, to your credit, Robert, that you followed through on this and found that, that DEMA had some money, and you had a reason to want it. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just one small cog in the machine that is the sheriff's office, but the Saber Team did bring in the stats that they garnered, and the evidence that they have captured was responsible for us getting over thirty million dollars in the last couple of months.
But part of it was probably because your wife helped you write the grant.
One hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, next, the treasurer. Let's have a, a motion while Kathy also showers praise on the sheriff's department.
Sternism, Madam Chair.
It's yours.
Okay. Approve the recommendation of County Treasurer for the abatement of property taxes and interest on personal property and the removal of personal property tax liens on Treasurer's Certificate of Clearance Number 2023 dash zero three eight two twenty twenty-three zero six nine.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second now.
Good morning.
Is there an end to this ever?
I, you know, I really keep thinking that our dynamic Sheriff's Office will work themselves out of a job, but they have not proven that to be true. And and with your indulgence, too, I would like to thank both the the County Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office. I'm one of their biggest internal clients, and my poor county attorneys, I know I'm very difficult customer, but you guys really, really helped me out a lot, and I do appreciate both of your departments very, very much. And because the Sheriff's Office is such a dynamic group of people, today I'm presenting thirty-two more abatements for your signature in the total of twenty-four thousand, three dollars and fifty whole cents for derelict properties that are being removed from the tax roll.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to thank you for helping my constituent who I've been nagging you about for.
Nagging is a really kind term for you to use for yourself there.
I appreciate it very much. I got a positive message from him, and thank you.
Because I'm nice, Tom, I keep telling you. But I'm but I'm legal. I'm legal. So, yes.
Any questions?
I don't.
No? Okay, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks so much.
Okay, Health Department. As Ms. Thompson, the Health Director's coming forward, let's have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Two to Intergovernmental Agreement IGA CTR zero five eight six five seven, previously IGA twenty twenty-one dash oh seventy-four COVID nineteen response staffing between the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, and Cochise Health and Social Services, effective March first, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Have a motion in a second now, Ms. Thompson.
Yes, Alicia Thompson, Health Director, Cochise Health and Social Services. So this is an intergovernmental agreement that you accepted back in January of twenty twenty-one. We had an amendment to extend our ability to spend those funds for another year, and this second amendment just extends it further into May thirty-first, and we use these funds to pay for our contracted school epidemiologist.
Okay. Any questions?
Does this funding have anything to do with vaccinations?
No.
Epidemiologists keeps records.
Yeah, and helps them when they have a have a case of some kind of illness that they need to respond to in schools.
And that is a pretty sure thing, by the way.
It is. He stays busy with it.
Yeah. Even in our little towns with our hardy children.
Yep.
They get sick, and it goes all through the school. So thank you.
Questions or comments?
Go ahead.
Okay, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal Advocate. Could we have a motion while Zochi is coming to the microphone?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the addition of one position control number to the total positions in the Office of Legal Advocate to create a social, excuse me, social worker position utilizing funds from Title IV Indigent Defense reimbursements for the purpose of improving parent and or child representation in dependency cases.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second. So you deal with the dependency cases?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Socia Rosco. I'm the legal advocate, and we are always endeavoring to improve representation for parents and children that are involved in a separation proceeding. So if the Department of Child Safety removes a child, we are involved in representing either the child or a parent in that proceeding. This social worker would help with endeavoring to improve the person's representation. So if there is a drug problem, for example, with a parent, the social worker would help link to services for addressing that issue if if there's an issue with homelessness, if there is an issue for the child to have an education, if there's an IEP, something like that, the social worker would just help the attorney to move the case forward and 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 help with that representation.
So more like an aide to you so that you can represent them better?
Absolutely, and especially in Cochise County, where services are not necessarily available in our county. We have children that are placed in Phoenix. We have children that are placed in Tucson, parents that are trying to get services in those other places. So a lot of time is spent with just travel and coordination of services, and the social worker would help us do that.
Sounds like good. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, thank you.
No. Hey, looks like you hit a home run, Zochi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. State and federal legislation, I know that there've been some calls for us to respond to the legislature. They come to you as well as to me, so there's really no reason. We get the information from ACO every week on how that legislation is going. So I think it's important for us to speak up when you see legislation that is either against what you want or for what you want. So both ways it works. Mr. Carwach, do you have a report?
I do.
Okay.
And this is regarding the jail district excise tax. So statements for and against. So we're looking for statements for or against the proposed jail district excise tax, and that is due by February fifteenth by five P M. So people that are listening, I know it's on our website. This these arguments need to be submitted to the clerk of the board. If there's any issues or questions, please contact the clerk of the board. But these for and against arguments need to be submitted both electronically at board at cochise dot A Z dot gov, and also that needs to be mailed to the clerk of the board of supervisors, building G, fourteen fifteen, Melody Lane, Bisbee, Arizona, eight five six zero three. So please, once again, for and against arguments, please submit those for the jail district excise tax. And if you go to our website, scroll to the bottom, you can see that information there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Current events. Two brothers, District One.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I am just going to quote a letter that the Board of Supervisors supervisors drafted, and this is in response to a lot of misinformation that we keep hearing, and it's October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. It says, "The board wishes to follow all applicable requirements in statutes and election procedure manual when conducting its expanded precinct hand count."
Madam Chair?
That will mean.
Madam Chair, excuse me. Yes, that's not a current event, Madam Chair.
I don't wish to hear from the county attorney at this time.
Well, you're going to hear from me because that's my job. That is not a current event.
We we ask for current events. Have you attended anything?
It's a current event because it was brought up in public comments earlier today.
Madam Chair, I'm warning Supervisor Crosby that he is approaching OML violations. This is the third warning that is not a current event.
It it's a courtesy to let us know when we're approaching an open meeting violation, so.
We're not.
You have been warned.
This this, that's fine. I would note that in the absence of actual rules of order, and we are operating under the nonexistent and English rules of order, that we should fall back on the ARSs. And it says in County Attorney eleven five thirty-two, "When required, give a written opinion to county officers on matters related to the duties of their officers." It says, "Act as legal advisor to the Board of Supervisors attending its meetings and oppose."
Tell me, let's not make a federal case out of it. Do you have any current events that you want to give?
I'm still in my point of order. Okay. So, yeah, okay. Point of order. Okay, it says, "Act as legal advisor to the Board of Supervisors, attend its meetings, and oppose any claims against the county that the county attorney deems unjust or illegal." So it says, "Attend its meetings." It does not say interrupt the county supervisors' meeting.
Madam Chair, once again, that was not a current event. You're approaching an OML violation.
I don't wish to hear from the county attorney at this time.
You will hear from me because that is my job. You're speaking over me. You're speaking over me, Supervisor Crosby. Madam Chair, I am formally warning Supervisor Crosby, he is creating an OML violation.
There's not a written opinion, but I'd be glad to take a recess so that she can create a written opinion.
I accuse not to recess, and I'm going to move on.
No, I get to talk. I get to talk. I'm not done.
It's not forever.
Do we time you? Should we time you? Should we should we have time?
You're making a federal case out of this.
Then let me talk. Then let me talk. I get to talk. I'm not done talking yet. All right? And I've got another section that I'm going to address, and it is the letter from the.
Supervisor Crosby, that is not a current event. I'm going to warn you again that you're creating an OML, an OML violation. That is not a current event for you to discuss that this time.
I don't wish to hear from the county attorney.
And I suppose you will hear from me because that is my job. That is what I'm going to do.
There hasn't been a second, there hasn't been a vote to hear from the county attorney.
I don't need a motion. They don't need to make a motion here for me. That is my job for me to do.
I get to talk.
You get to talk about current events.
This is a current event.
That's on the agenda.
It this is.
Agenda rules, Mr. Crosby.
We're not, this isn't the meeting.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't.
Still in the meeting. You have not closed this meeting.
No, this is current.
We're at the point of current event.
No, this is.
You know what the word current means?
Yes, I do.
Recent.
Yeah. And it has to do with the criticisms of me that were made in the call to the public. That makes it a current event, and I'm responding to that. Okay? And it says, "Because of widespread concern," this is from the Attorney General Bernovich, "because of widespread concern raised about ballot marking procedures in Maricopa County Election Day voting centers, we suggest Maricopa County consider expanding the hand count audit to five percent of the voting center locations, which it may."
Madam Chair, I'm going to interrupt again. That is not a current event.
Sixteen six oh two B one and Section eleven, Section three A of the Elections Procedure Manual.
I'm going to be rude and and move on. The current events from District Two, I'm going to pass. Current events from District Three, Ms. Goode.
Mine are exciting. Yes, they are very exciting. Tomorrow in Wilcox is the Agriculture and Livestock Trade Show, which was typically Ag Day year after year, and it's been changed for a few years the format. They've included a youth section, and they still have the regular trainings and really neat livestock type trade and agriculture type trade. They do have a free barbecue lunch, and if anyone is down in Wilcox, you don't want to miss the Ag Day or the Livestock Agriculture and Livestock Trade Show. They have some tractor driving competition, too, this year that I hadn't noticed before. Exciting, exciting news. And then I it's kind of a holiday, by the way, in Wilcox, so it's exciting. And the next exciting news that last night, my eighteenth grandchild was born, a little baby boy in Cotton City, New Mexico. So he's not really one of our residents, but he's close.
Okay, our next meeting is today at one thirty in the Board of Supervisors Executive Hearing Room. It's for a work session regarding Engineering and Natural Resources Department update. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned.